Good morning. Welcome to July Lampton County Council Meeting. And I'd ask Mr. Beauchamp to take the roll call, please.
Thank you, Warden. Deputy Warden Agar. Councillor Atkinson. Councillor Bushy. Councillor Bradley. Councillor Broad. Councillor Case. Councillor Cook. Councillor Dennis.
Present.
Councillor Ferguson. Councillor Hand. Councillor Loosely. Councillor McRoberts. Councillor Miller. Councillor Sageman. Councillor Veen. Councillor White. Warden Marriott. We have quorum.
Thank you. We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral land of the Chipewa, Odoa, and Potawatomi peoples referred to collectively as the Anishinaabe. It is through the connection of the Anishinaabe with the spirit of the land, water, and air that we recognize your unique cultures, traditions, and values. Together as treaty people, we have a shared responsibility to act with respect for the environment that sustains all life, protecting the future for those generations to come.
I am number three. I would ask any member of council to declare a cuneary interest now or any time during the meeting. Councillor Dennis.
Yes, sir, Mr. Warden. I have a conflict with number 12 correspondence recommend recommendation to receive and file a letter from the delegate integrity commissioner Rebecca Hines regarding an issue.
Okay, thank you. And Councillor Case, please.
Yes, Mr. Warden. I have a conflict of interest in the committee meeting committee minutes as well, that being 15A in the social services report, as I have a family member that works in that division. Thank you. And I've also filed the necessary paperwork as well, Mr. Warden.
Thank you very much. I'd look for a motion to go in camera for the reasons noted in the agenda. Councillor Hand, second by Councillor Loosely, all in favor. That be carried, we'll meet in Committee Room Three. Welcome back. Please join me for a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. I would ask Mr. Beauchamp to rise and report from in camera, please.
Thank you, Warden. I can report that Lampton County Council met in camera this morning for approximately five minutes to review a few matters, the first being to review the Lampton County Council closed session minutes dated June 4th of 2025. The second was to receive a report regarding litigation between the county and a third party. And thirdly, to review the committee of the whole in-camera minutes dated June 18th of 2025, which included a report regarding an agreement between the county and a third party relating to funding information explicitly supplied in confidence, a report regarding negotiations between the county and a third party relating to a property in the city of Sarnia, and a report on labor negotiations between the county and SEIU Local One Canada.
Thank you, Mr. Beauchamp. I'm number eight, delegations. I'd look for a motion to invite delegations within the bar to speak to County Council. Councillor Broad moves and Councillor Loosely seconds, all in favor. That be carried. First delegation is Ernest Morens. Ontario Senior Games Association will present to council to raise awareness for the Ontario Senior Games Association's operations in Lampton County. Welcome, Mr. Morens.
Thank you. You call you Sir Worship, or? Kevin's good. Okay. It's a pleasure to meet all you ladies and gentlemen's from all the different councils in Lampton County. As all of you are sitting here, how many of you are over 55? Would you please raise your hand? Come on, come on, don't be bashful. Okay. Come on, Gary, you're over 55. Okay, you have a small pamphlet in front of you here, would you please open that? And you can see in there all the areas that there are senior games committee for all of Ontario. And if you look down in the small corner on the left-hand side, you'll see District 33, which is Lampton County. We have just reactivated the Ontario Senior Games Committee for Lampton County this past year. And we're looking for more support from all the different mayors and their councils because we need more help to get these games going. Now, if you look in front of you, you'll see two pieces sheets of paper. One shows the games that have been permitted put on be District 29, and you'll show another one that District 33 has put on this year. And you'll see that we've had a set of played cribbage in Point Edward, Uker in Petroya, Bid Uker in Arcona, and Pepper in Fort Franks. Those are just, we're just a small group, we're getting started, but we need more help from all the different areas. And it's strictly nonprofit group. It costs you $15 to join the Ontario Senior Games. That's it, for the year. And it costs you $2 to enter each game. So we raise, we have no money, really. So we're looking for help in different, if we have a venue in your area. And also, we're looking for volunteers to try and get more vent people out of the different areas. I've got two people out of Petroya, two out of Arcona, and the rest of the, one person out of Point Edward, and then the rest of us are all in the Point Franks, Ypres, Lampton Shores area. So if there's any questions about the games, I'd like to, anybody want to ask any questions? Yes?
Councillor White.
Thank you, Warden, and through you, thank you for your presentation. I'm excited to see the potential uptake of this. Can you just give us a little bit more of an overview of what, what other activities may be involved overall and what the connection is to perhaps communities or maybe larger events outside of the community? What's the potential for, for growth and connection to other, other communities?
Excuse me, if you look at what District 29 has been doing, once we get more help, like get somebody from your area to assist, then we can expand. But right now, we're limited to just four areas, and we don't want to put on an event that fails. Every event we've had so far is good turnout, we're having 40, 50, 60 people to each event. So if we wanted to put on, say, pickleball, badminton, cornhole, well, we need assistance from all the other areas. That's basically what we're after. Down the road, next year, we'd probably come to council and see if we can ask for a grant to help with funds.
Follow up, Councillor White.
Thank you, Warden. And do members have the potential to, I don't know, like compete against each other and other communities members from around Ontario, or how wide does that swath reach?
What happens is if you win in your district, say you win gold, silver, or bronze, you get a little golden, then you get a chance, this year, the Ontario Senior Games are in Sudbury. So you get a chance to go to Sudbury and play there. You have to pay your own way, you don't go, you don't get a free ride. So you go to Sudbury and compete there, and if you get a gold medal, you're, that's what you've got. So it's, you have to play in your own area. Now, say, we don't have pickleball or badminton or something in our district, like in Lampton County. We can go to District 29 or any of the other districts that have that function and compete there. And then if you win there, you can, as, because if you're representing District 33, and you place, and you're the only one from District 33, then you would automatically get a chance to go to Sudbury.
Councillor McRoberts.
Thank you, through the chair. What means are you using to contact other seniors in cities and towns to even know this exists?
I have a website. If you look in the upper corner, left-hand corner of the one from, for our district, we've got a little insignia. We're just trying to get the word of mouth out. We've, we've got a website, and it's, it's just hard to get a hold of people that are interested in assisting. There's lots of people want to play, but not a lot of people want to assist in the committee to help put on a function.
Follow up, Councillor McRoberts.
Thank you. Have you tried reaching out to the legions? I, I'm a member of my legion, and I'm going to reach out to the board, one to see if we can maybe find some funding, but also, we have a lot of seniors there, and I'm sure all of our legions have the same, so. Branch 62 in Sarnia. Branch 62 in Sarnia.
I'm also a member of 156 and C-4th, and I attend a lot of functions at the Thedford branch, so, and Forest branch. We've reached out to Forest, we've tried to get somebody from Forest to assist, nobody seems to, it's, it's hard to get volunteers. So if, if you can get help and you can get one person, we're having, our next regular meeting is in Petroya next, a week from today, at 10 o'clock in the morning. So if somebody has got somebody that wants to come, have them there. Yes?
Councillor McRoberts.
There is that meeting?
Also, the one thing is, I was at the Ontario Annual General, Annual General Meeting in Peterborough last year, and I went and said something I shouldn't, I shot my mouth off and said that, why don't you come to Sarnia for the annual general meeting? Well, guess what? This spring, they called me and asked me to get some quotes, and believe it or not, Sarnia is the cheaper place, one of the cheapest places in Ontario to have an annual general meeting, and it's going to be there this year. So it's in Point Edward. And the other thing we'll be looking for, for this annual general meeting is little gifts, like pins from your town, from each town, or ever, or something for a grab bay. And I've already asked that at the Lampton Elderly, is it Elderly Outreach? Yes, I've been at, made a presentation there two months ago, asking for donations for the grab bay, and I got one from Alvinston. I'm, I'm going back next week to, in two weeks, to see if I can get, get these people on board. But I need your help. Get this message out, go back to your areas, and hopefully.
Councillor White, you had another question?
Thank you, Warden. First off, I'm glad you're coming to Sarnia's favorite, second favorite suburb of Point Edward for the AGM. Congrats, Councillor Hand. We, I'm thinking big picture, long-term here. If we were to look to some potentially, as of yet not built, but hopefully soon, multi-use rec facility in Sarnia, or one of our other communities in Lampton County, what would it take, again, for the bigger pitch, right? This is our long-term plan, we'd like to host whatever Sudbury's hosting this year, we'd like to host an Ontario Games. What would that take in order to achieve that?
I wasn't going to go to Sudbury for the annual general meeting, because it's expensive. But if you get the facility ready, I would make the presentation, it takes a year or two in advance to do it. The, the presentation was in Peterborough last September, and it was up in the air where they were going to go, it was talk to Sudbury, so it's in Sudbury, but it wouldn't probably be any problem having it in, in Sarnia. Not a problem at all. If you've got the facility, they'll come. And Sarnia has proved to them that they got a better price, like rooms, I think we're paying $150 a night in Sarnia, and they're 200, 250 somewhere else, so keep your, keep your facilities working that way. So it wouldn't be no problem getting it there.
Any other questions before I let Mr. Morens go?
Just please, get me some volunteers.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. Okay, our second delegation is Brian Eaves, President of Lampton Federation of Agriculture, and Crispin Colvin, Director with Ontario Federation of Agriculture. They want to present to council an information update from Lampton Federation of Agriculture on key issues affecting primary agriculture production in Lampton County. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, Warden and councillors, it's a pleasure to be here today. As the Warden introduced, Brian Eaves, President of the Lampton Federation of Agriculture. We're also here with Karen McLean, who's in the audience, who's the Ontario Federation of Agriculture Member Service Rep for this region. Some of the topics that we've been dealing with are not new to you, I'm sure. Interprovincial trade barriers are one of the things that have been slowing agriculture for a number of years, so we're looking forward to having that move forward. The issues that we're looking at particularly, along with the Canadian Federation of Agriculture, are the movement of labor. Labor is important in agriculture, as you know, there's always a shortage of labor in agriculture. In fact, I believe we're in the neighborhood of, if we're fortunate enough to have offshore labor and local labor, we're in the neighborhood of having about 70 to, maybe at the high end, 80% if we're really lucky, of the labor we actually need in agriculture. And one of the restrictions is moving offshore labor from one farm to another. So if a farm is needing labor, and I have people that I can't use at the moment, I'm not allowed to let them go to another farm at the moment. So those are some of the issues that we're facing. Also, with interprovincial trade, we're looking at barriers such as meat processing. Federally inspected meat can go between provinces and can be sold internationally. If it's provincially inspected, it can't leave the province of Ontario. So Eastern Ontario, for example, has an issue. They get meat processed in Quebec, it can't come back to Ontario unless it's a federally inspected plant. So those are some of the issues in interprovincial trade that we're looking at. Tariffs, and I'm sorry the printing didn't turn up on this one, that's my fault, but we're again working with the Canadian Federation of Agriculture on this. It's a changing landscape, as you all know, it changes every 24 hours or less. But one of the things that we're trying to emphasize in, in this environment is the bi-local aspect. OFA has a homegrown campaign, which is promoted on all kinds of social platforms, basically advertising and showing where you can get locally what's available in the province throughout the year. The Kuzma part of the, covers a lot of agriculture, so in terms of trade, there was an attempt by the US to put some tariffs on products, such as pork, for example, a lot of it gets processed in the United States. That ended up coming off because it was already part of the Canadian, Canada-US-Mexico Free Trade Agreement. So some of those things, we want to make sure that we can ensure that they stay, so that we can move products back and forth across the border as freely as possible. You know that I always talk about the protection of farmland, but I wanted to point out this statistic, and I think it's very important. The Food and Agriculture Organization of the United Nations has predicted that 90% of the earth's soil will be degraded by 2050. That means that only 10% of the earth on land, of our land, not just Canada's, but worldwide, can support agriculture. That means that 10% of the world's agricultural land will have to support almost 10 billion people by 2050. So I can't emphasize enough how important it is to protect agricultural land. Now, you've always heard the statistic, and I've given it numerous times, you're probably tired of hearing it, 319 acres a day that we lose to development or other uses other than agriculture that comes out of production. Once it's lost, it's gone forever, it never returns. One of the best examples, I think, is when I look at the Ford Talbotville plant, it was idle for, after they tore it down for over a decade before Amazon went in, all that grew after that period was weeds. So once something's gone, it's gone forever. So it's imperative that planning be done very, very well. Woodstock alone, for example, is taking 7,000 acres for housing. In the Picton area, they've lost 15,000 acres to development. So we can't afford to continue to lose land at that level, especially when we have to feed 10 billion people worldwide. And Canada will be one of those nations that countries will look to, to provide food. We've had good partnerships with municipalities throughout the, the years in terms of supporting the agricultural sector, and I think we work fairly well together when we lobby government for things like technology or reliable broadband. We lobby for roads and bridges, and even things like roundabouts. We've had issues with roundabouts, and I'm sure you've heard many of them, where they're too small for the large equipment to go around. Even transport trucks have issues with roundabouts in some cases. So, and of course, attracting natural gas. So we're really pleased that we are able to work with municipalities to lobby not only on our behalf, but on your behalf, because it's important to work as partners to achieve the goals that we need for our businesses and for your communities.
Thank you for the chance to give you a quick update regarding the Ontario Hydro Corridors that are coming through most of West Ontario. There is now four separate corridors. The slide mentions the St. Thomas Line, and then there is a much larger, much, you know, more impactful line, what's calling the Longwoods Line, this Longwoods to Lake Shore. It'll be considerably wider, and of course, the length of it overall is, is going to be very significant, once again impacting, having some impact to farmland, et cetera. The other two that I'd like to make a mention is the recently completed line that goes, went from Chatham to Lake Shore. And then I guess the one that's closest to my heart is the one that's, that's called the St. Clair Line, that is coming from Chatham to basically the OPG site, you know, south here on, in southern Lampton County. That particular one is now just beginning the construction phase. We will see consular activity start to happen this fall, and then going into next year, with the anticipated completion probably in 2027. the anticipated completion probably in 2027. Next item we, I'd like to speak about is, is the change in our railways. And this is our, across, across Canada, the national railways have recently decided that, that they are not going to, or going to stop acknowledging the Drainage Acts. What this is meaning in, for many farmers is, is that they have to come up with methods or pay in most cases to determine how they're going to manage those, those drainage areas that are impacted by railways, where formerly those, those railway companies would provide drainage or would pay for the drainage. And also the crossings associated with those railways. You've got multiple properties right here in Lampton County that farms are split because that railway goes through them. Initially, that railway was stating that those farms would have to come up with a crossing, bring it up to standards, or determine another method to cross that railway. They have recently backed away from that, that statement. But this is a very significant issue and still very upcoming. The municipality of Chatham, Kent, and the OFA have, have stated into a intervener-type status on the discussion and on the, the claims associated with this. But still very much a topic that is upcoming, still coming forward. Another newer type of, of comment that's, that our federal government is working on is something called carbon storage. There's been a number of methods that have been looked at to how we can perform some type of carbon storage here in Canada. And one of the most recent ones that we have concerns about is use of, of former abandoned natural gas wells to push carbon down into the ground, very, very deep in the ground as, as the, the pictorial estimates, they're, they're looking at 800 meters down to store that carbon long-term. One of the biggest issues that we see with this is that, number one is the use of these abandoned wells. How will these abandoned wells be, be understood that they're not going to leak? And, and what is the, the actual integrity of the storage method? Leaking carbon into water is, is not a very good thing. And, and the, that's probably our single biggest concern is that how will this carbon leakage be maintained, assuming it, it does not get into water? But also long-term, if this company that approaches or does this, this type of storage, transfers, goes out of business, et cetera, then how will that be managed? The last item I'd like to speak about is battery storage systems. Here in Ontario, the ISO has, has ran across, or started the process of working through multiple projects to provide some type of energy storage. That energy storage can take several forms. There's been some water storage systems that are currently under development. One that there, there were at one point, three different projects that were proposed here for Lampton County for battery storage. Primary concern here is, is we, we don't want to come forward and say we don't want these. There is a very definite need. It allows us, it allows the province of Ontario to better utilize the generation capacity that we have available, smooth out those peaks. But the issue we see with battery storage is, is twofold in the fact of that and of use. What happens when those batteries are not available for, or not efficient enough to manage their storage any longer? And fire suppression. Spoken to many, many different fire, firefighting individuals, and they really do not have an idea of what they do in this situation, other than let it burn? Or potentially like an electric car, put it in some type of a water capacity? There is no way to extinguish this fire once they start.
Everybody is concerned about taxes and where your dollars go and how they're spent. So what we've done at the OFA is we did some studies of cost of community services. So basically what this is doing is it's taking the revenue that a municipality makes, how it gets it, and where it spends it on community services. It impacts the land use, of course. But it's, a big thing is where does your dollar go? Where does your dollar come from? Who brings in the most and who brings in, who expends the most? So on this particular slide, it just shows, the red line is, for example, every dollar that you collect. The blue is how much is spent in those particular businesses. So commercial, industrial versus residential versus farms and forests. So interpreting the results, basically what it means is the median results show that farmland is actually a net benefit to municipal coffers, whereas housing is a greater cost and, than it, than the revenue it generates. So residential revenue for every dollar that you raise spends about a dollar 16 or more to provide services. Agriculture, for every dollar you raise, requires about 37 cents of services. And businesses, for every dollar they raise, require about 30 cents. So that when you're looking at planning and land use, think of this, think of it this way. When you take farmland out of production to put it into housing, you're losing a lot of money. It's costing you. And so you have to start thinking about what's the best way to make the benefit of the land that you need to create accommodation in particular, or businesses for that matter. So density is obviously the key. The more density you have in an area, the less revenue it will take out of the stream. In other words, you're taking less land out of production and therefore maintaining your revenue stream. We all need to maintain that revenue stream. I want to maintain it on my farm, and I want to see municipalities do the same thing. In a nutshell, ladies and gentlemen, I'll end on that topic because I think that's probably one of the most important ones for you in terms of planning and land use and housing and how you generate revenue. If you have any questions, I know Brian and I, Mr. Warden, would be pleased to answer them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and Counselor Ferguson.
Thank you, Warden. Thank you for the presentation. I just want to point out today, from Senator Black's office, we got this envelope today. In there, it's on land use and the degradation of land also. In there's a brochure of the QR code. If you take that home and take a look at it with your phones later on, it'd be appreciated.
Any other questions for the delegation? Seeing nothing, thank you again, Crispin and Brian, for your presentation.
If I can put on my other hat for one second, we, I deposited some International Plowing Match 2027, save the date cards back on the table. For those of you that aren't aware, we in Lampton County have been awarded the 2027 Plowing Match. It will take place in September 21st to 25th, 2027, at the Brignan Fairgrounds. Volunteers, volunteers, volunteers. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. Thank you. Item number nine, presentations. We have two today. The first one, Dr. Carolyn Duick, Medical Officer of Health, and Kevin Churchill, General Manager, Public Health Services, will present to council regarding the details of Lampton Public Health 2025 to 2029 Strategic Plan.
Good morning. Kevin Churchill, General Manager of Public Health Services Division, and myself as the Medical Officer of Health for Lampton Public Health, are pleased to present the 2025 to 2029 Lampton Public Health Strategic Plan to County Council as our Board of Health for your approval to adopt this plan to strategically guide our work.
Sorry. Strategic planning offers Lampton Public Health a vital opportunity to intentionally shape our path forward, strengthening our ability to deliver on our mandate and advancing our ultimate vision, a community where all people are supported to strive for safety, health, and wellbeing. Our planning and our work are a collective effort. We're very grateful to all who shared their perspectives, staff, leaders, members of the public, community partners, and members of the Board of Health. Your insights and ideas, coupled with information provided by a robust environmental scan of 34 background documents, help to shape the direction of our future work and ensure our strategy is grounded in the needs, strengths, and aspirations of those we serve and work
Lampton Public Health's new four-year strategic plan relied on an evidence-informed process designed to align our organizational efforts with the evolving needs of the communities we serve. The process was structured to maximize the use of available data, encourage broad engagement, and ensure the resulting plan is actionable and rooted in local realities. The planning process unfolded in four phases. First, the design phase, beginning in January 2025 with Platinum Leadership. We developed a strategic planning framework that prioritized the integration of data, research, and interest holder perspectives. An environmental scan was conducted to examine external trends, opportunities, and risks affecting public health. This work helped us better understand our operational context and laid the foundation for informed decision-making. Second, the discover phase. With Platinum Leadership, we engaged internal and external interest holders through surveys and interviews, including members of the public, community partners, staff, management, and the Board of Health. These conversations identified key local health priorities, system gaps, and opportunities for collaboration and innovation, ensuring our plan reflects the voices of those we serve and work alongside. Third, the decide phase. Senior leadership reviewed the data together, identifying themes and potential areas of focus, discerning strategic priorities, goals, and objectives for the next four years. Finally, the develop phase. With a clear roadmap in hand, Lampton Public Health is well positioned to operationalize these priorities and measure outcomes that support accountability, alignment across teams, and the ability to monitor and communicate progress towards our goals.
Lampton Public Health is one of 29 public health units in Ontario, delivering mandated public health programs and services for 11 municipalities throughout the county of Lampton. Our work is guided by the Ontario Public Health standards and overseen by the Board of Health for Lampton County, which is made up of municipal representatives serving on County Council. We provide regular updates to the Board of Health at each County Council meeting, with reports made publicly available in County Council's agendas and our own public health reports. Lampton Public Health also works in collaboration with the communities of Amgenong First Nation, Kettleland-Stoney Point First Nation, and Walpole Island First Nation.
The vision, mission, and values from Lampton Public Health's inaugural 2014 to 2019 Strategic Plan have been reaffirmed in our strategic plan for the next four years. Lampton Public Health's vision is a community that supports all people to strive for safety, health, and wellbeing. Our mission is to work with the community to assess, promote, and protect health, prevent disease and injury, and advance healthy public policy. With a goal of health for all, Lampton Public Health's values are clear: through collaboration, leadership, equity, accountability, and respect.
Grounded in our mission, informed by interest holder input, and responsive to emerging needs and opportunities, Lampton Public Health will focus our efforts in these key areas in the next four years.
Mental and physical health and early life, with a goal to promote the mental and physical health of children, youth, and families.
Community confidence and engagement, with a goal to ensure the delivery of high-quality programs and services that meet local needs and leverage community partners.
Workforce development and wellbeing, with a goal to foster a capable, responsive workforce with a positive workplace culture.
Emergency management, with a goal to safeguard public health in emergencies. Following slides, expand on the objectives of each of these priority areas.
Mental and physical health and early life. Enabling positive mental and physical health requires a community response. Our interest holders consistently identified mental health and addictions as an urgent priority for our community. The role of public health in these issues is to work upstream, addressing root causes, promoting protective factors, and collaborating with community partners who provide direct services and supports. Focusing on mental and physical health and early life is one of the most impactful investments a public health unit can make. By promoting healthy starts for children and supporting families, Lampton Public Health can prevent future health challenges, reduce health inequities, and strengthen community resilience. Together, we build a strong foundation for healthier futures for individuals and the whole community. Lampton Public Health will pursue this goal by conducting and reporting on a community health assessment with youth and families, enhancing services that meet the health needs of children and families from preconception to school entry, and supporting and collaborating with educational settings to promote child and youth mental and physical health.
Next priority is community confidence and engagement. With disinformation on the rise, it's more important than ever to keep confidence in public health. When community members feel confident in their local public health unit, they're more likely to engage in programs, follow public health guidelines, and know that Lampton Public Health is a credible, reliable source of information. We will share clear and consistent information to support health guidance and work together with partners on responsive programs that meet community needs. Lampton Public Health will pursue these goal by, these goals by collecting and reporting on relevant community health information, enhancing Lampton, Lampton Public Health brand awareness and public confidence, and developing a partnership engagement strategy.
Workforce development and wellbeing. Our greatest strength is our people. The public health workforce is a highly skilled, professional group that can respond to evolving community needs. Supporting staff learning and wellbeing helps ensure they have the tools and supports they need to do their jobs well and adapt to changes in the field and our local community. This in turn helps our communities by providing consistent, high-quality, compassionate public health practices. Lampton Public Health will pursue this goal by promoting continuous learning to enhance delivery of services, promoting a unified workplace with communications that reflect Lampton Public Health's values, and prioritizing employee wellbeing and recognition.
Next priority is emergency management. Emergency management is essential for public health, enabling quick, coordinated responses to crises, particularly diseases of public health significance. It ensures vital services such as vaccines and public messaging continue during emergencies. Strong planning and partnerships where the public health unit is prepared to respond in their role increases confidence and credibility and strengthens community resilience year round. Lampton Public Health will pursue this goal by maintaining emergency response plans, including risk assessments and internal business continuity planning, to be prepared for all phases of the emergency management cycle. Establishing scalable tools and practices for emergency management. Identifying and maintaining critical partnership leads for a range of emergency responses.
Grounded in its mandate and mission, defined in the Health Protection and Promotion Act, Lampton Public Health's 2025 to 2029 Strategic Plan sets a path to reach the vision of Lampton County as a community that supports all people to strive for safety, health, and wellbeing. Lampton Public Health is well positioned to operationalize these priorities and measure outcomes that support accountability, alignment across programs and services, and the ability to monitor and report on community progress towards these goals. It is our recommendation to County Council as the Board of Health for Lampton Public Health to adopt the 2025 to 2029 Strategic Plan as attached in Appendix A to the report. We thank you for your consideration of approval.
Thank you, Dr. Duick and Mr. Churchill. We will consider the recommendation at 11C. Are there any questions for Dr. Duick or Mr. Churchill at this time? Seeing none, thank you for your presentation. Our second presentation today is Mr. Ian Haney, Manager, Homelessness Prevention and Social Planning, will present to council regarding the Lampton County housing and home security. Social Planning, will present to council regarding the Lampton County Housing and Homelessness Progress Report of 2024. Welcome, Mr. Haney.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. Good morning. My name is Ian Haney. I manage the Homelessness Prevention and Social Planning Department within Social Services. And I'm here this morning... Thank you, Lisa. I'm here this morning to share a very brief overview of our latest Housing and Homelessness Progress Report, including offering just a few highlights of our community's collective efforts in this space and key initiatives moving forward. In 2024 and now into 2025, our community continues to experience sustained and elevated demand for housing and homelessness supports. As in all communities across Ontario and Canada, housing precarity remains a pressing issue, compounded by persistent poverty and the ongoing opioid crisis. Despite these challenges, meaningful progress was made towards the goals established in our local housing and homelessness plan, including expanding the supply of affordable housing and preserving existing housing stock. In addition, our community further strengthened critical partnerships and enhanced the coordination of programs to deliver homelessness prevention services as effectively and equitably as possible, making the use of the most of our strained local resources. In 2019, the County of Lampton developed the renewed Housing and Homelessness Plan after extensive workshops, small group discussions, and surveys that engaged local residents, individuals with limited experience, and agency experts, including members of our Housing and Homelessness Advisory Committee. This plan had a clear vision and guiding principles, offers goals and key milestones for our community, and is supported by both a needs report and importantly, a best practices report. As we all know, the need, the landscape regarding housing and homelessness has changed dramatically since late 2019, particularly since the outset of the pandemic in 2020. The level of housing precarity, the dramatic shift in housing affordability, the concurrent opioid crisis, and stagnant social assistance rates have led to a dramatic increase in homelessness across Ontario and across Canada. This tremendous demand has led to local municipal budgets continuing to bear the significant and growing burden of our national and provincial housing instability, highlighting the need to invest as much as possible into preventative solutions and long-term solutions. While every year this council receives dozens of reports regarding both housing and homelessness, each year we also offer a general summative update on our community's progress towards the milestones in this plan, and a reflection of the coordinated collaborative efforts taken by dozens of local agencies to try and meet our community's needs. So I'll spend just a few minutes today outlining a few key recent initiatives under the plans' four goals. The first goal is to increase and sustain supply and appropriate mix of affordable housing. Lampton County Council reaffirmed its commitment to this goal by committing $3 million to the Affordable Housing Reserve through the budget. In 2024, the need for affordable housing continued to grow. A plan was developed to meet the need, to meet the increased demand. The At Home in the County of Lampton Report will guide the creation of new affordable and supportive housing. This multi-year, portfolio-scale, strategic affordable and supportive housing development plan, if fully implemented, could see the creation of hundreds of affordable and supportive units. Efforts also continued on the preservation and maintenance of existing community housing through investments of funds from all levels of government. For two examples of local efforts regarding this goal, we saw the addition of two units in our community housing portfolio by converting non-residential spaces into residential units. Further, council approved a 50-unit affordable housing development on Kathleen Avenue. Construction is taking place this year, completion expected in 2026. The second goal is to increase access to affordable housing and supports that meet people's needs to achieve housing stability. In 2024, our community continued to face increased demand for housing with supports. Although many agencies were providing supports to housed individuals, it was clear Lampton was missing the supportive housing component of the housing continuum. To fill this void, a partnership was formed with Indwell Community Homes with the goal to plan, construct, and eventually operate between 150 and 300 supportive housing units in Lampton. In the meantime, all community partners will continue to support residents to achieve housing stability. For examples of the broad efforts in this space, in 2024, 133 individuals on average were assisted monthly through the Housing Advocacy Program by community support workers. These workers have caseloads that consist of high-need individuals with complex cases. Services offered consist of regular check-ins with tenants, mediation of tenant conflicts, complaints, assistance with budgeting, eviction prevention, and much more. As just one other example among the many in the report, eight households in 2024 received funds under the Home Ownership Downpayment Assistance Program. The program offers financial assistance to eligible households living in rental accommodations with one-time assistance in the form of a 20-year forgivable loan for a 10% down payment to be used towards the purchase of a home with a maximum purchase price of $325,000. To highlight just one effort undertaken in Goal Three, in 2024, Social Services launched Be Part of the Solution, a community-driven campaign aimed at transforming the local dialogue on homelessness into one centered on accurate information and actionable solutions. By promoting education, fostering understanding, and encouraging active participation, the initiative empowers individuals to contribute meaningfully towards addressing homelessness. We encourage anybody with questions about housing and homelessness to use this as your resource and to stay tuned as it's used as a vehicle to share updates regarding our collective local efforts. The final goal is ending homelessness. In 2024, our community continued to see the demand for homelessness services increase. On the screen, you'll see the trend of total and chronic homelessness in our community. As of previous recent years, the inflow into homelessness continued to be incredibly high across 2024. Reflective of this was just about a month ago, where we saw an inflow of almost 60, six-zero, individuals onto the by-name list within the month of May. However, you will see that Lampton has a relatively stable by-name list across 2024, putting us in fairly rare company in Ontario. While there are significant local housing precarity, including individuals residing in precarious housing, our levels of unsheltered homelessness is also markedly low. This is a product of coordinated preventative programming and very strong local housing outcomes, especially for priority populations like families, youth, and those living unsheltered, despite the many barriers to permanent housing, not the least of which is affordability, particularly for individuals in receipt of social assistance. As our community continues to struggle with both the opioid crisis and the housing crisis, the cohort of individuals experiencing chronic homelessness also grew in 2024. That's the green part of the bar graph in front of you. While these households were prioritized for service, their complex health needs often made securing and maintaining housing difficult. The level of intensive support that can be provided through true fixed-site supportive housing, in addition to strengthened multidisciplinary, accessible, mental health, and addiction services, will be needed to progress many of these households along the housing continuum. In other words, more simply, supportive housing is necessary to address our local housing and homelessness needs, to alleviate the overwhelming pressures that necessitate emergency responses like shelter, and accordingly, unburden our municipal budgets. The suite of local coordinated services that work in partnership to alleviate local pressure is very broad. On the screen, you will see just some of our partner agencies with whom we have a formal agreement for service. The collective impact of these programs, particularly those focused on tenancy retention, prevent hundreds of households from ever entering homelessness every year. The work conducted by those agencies, including our own, is very challenging. There is a network of highly-trained, dedicated, and passionate professionals working incredibly hard to support often difficult-to-serve individuals in a crisis and in an environment of scarcity. The path to build trust, to overcome barriers to housing, and to achieve improved life stabilization is very hard fought for each unique individual. Despite this, and in an environment wrought with misinformation and harsh negativity, these providers in our community achieved a great deal in 2024, including: in last year, we reduced and sustained reductions in youth homelessness by more than 50%. We progressed more than 30 families who are at the point of requiring a shelter bed into permanent housing. And as with every year since the outset of the pandemic, we've progressed more than 200 different individuals from homelessness into permanent housing. So I encourage council and our community to read the many stories included in our report to better see the positive impact that these many agencies have. The solution to homelessness is housing. For some, it's housing with various levels of wraparound supports. For many experiencing homelessness in Lampton, we will require supportive housing to effectively support them and shift away from emergency responses like shelter. While our small community is struggling with the effects of several national crises, looking ahead, there's reason to be quite hopeful. This year, we will see the introduction of the Lampton Hard Hub, a partnership between several local health and human service agencies that will bring much-needed new service that address key gaps in our local capacity. The Lampton Hard Hub will offer a suite of services across several locations that will include a multidisciplinary hub that integrates health, housing, and social services, 30 transitional recovery beds to support individuals in early recovery, 14 scatter-site supportive housing units supported by CMHA, 12 fixed-site supportive housing units supported by Indwell, augmented addictions navigation, and mobile care services through the mobile care bus. Further, through partnerships like that with Indwell, guided by the council-endorsed multi-year, portfolio-scale, supportive and affordable housing strategic plan, we will continue to leverage all available local resources and partnerships to address this council's number-one priority of housing, including shelter, affordable, and supportive housing. Thank you very much for your time today and for your continued support of the county team and our many very close partner agencies working tirelessly in this space.
Thank you, Mr. Haney. Any questions? Counselor McRoberts, please.
Thank you through the chair. Thank you for your presentation. My question would be, the 200 folks, we've discussed this before, that have found better housing, how often do we confirm and reach out to make sure that they're still in that housing so that we can get the wraparound services to come in? Or do we wait for them to come back and ask for help? That way, we're making the landlords, helping them being looked after and helping the situation where the individual's not up and down, up and down.
Mr. Haney, please.
Thank you very much for the question. Through you, Warden. Extensive efforts are made proactively from the moment an individual is progressed from homelessness into permanent housing to retain that housing. Our community has made significant efforts and investments towards tenancy-related supports, not just within the county team but across many agencies like CMHA, local CAS, a host of health and human service agencies that provide wraparound supports. Our retention of housing is particularly high, even among individuals experiencing chronic homelessness, and the follow-ups are extensive and routine and scheduled. And mediation is also facilitated directly with the landlords in order to try and quell concerns early if they arise.
Follow-up, Counselor McRoberts.
I understand that some individuals need more help than others, and when you're saying routinely, so those that really need the help, can you give me a number of how often they are checked in? I mean, some need every day, some need weekly, I would assume.
Mr. Haney, please.
Thank you for the question. Through you, Warden. Absolutely, it varies program by program, but generally speaking, if an individual has high needs, they will be on a caseload, a program that has a very low worker-to-client ratio, allowing them to follow up with the individual quite frequently. Yes, for some individuals, it's daily, particularly early in their tenancy. For others, the level of support scales down as they stabilize in their tenancy over time.
Any further questions? Counselor Loosely.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. It's not a question, just a comment. I want to thank Mr. Haney for that clear, detailed report. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Loosely. Counselor Bradley, and then Counselor Hand.
I have my hand up, too.
Thank you, Counselor, Mr. Warden. To Mr. Haney, what is the actual number of people on the housing waitlist? And then, as we move forward with different projects, how is that handled on a priority basis for those who are in need? But what's the actual number? Because I keep on hearing different numbers over the last couple of years.
Mr. Haney, please.
Thank you for the question. Through you, Warden. It doesn't surprise me that you've heard different numbers over recent years. The number is steadily increasing. I believe now the waitlist for community housing, for subsidized housing, has eclipsed 1,000 in Lampton County. And so, the wait for different-sized units has also eclipsed four years, generally speaking, for community housing. Now, the process for determining who next receives subsidized housing is facilitated by rules governed by the Housing Services Act. It's provincial legislation as a program to help alleviate our local homelessness crisis. In conjunction with these provincially-established processes, we have a homelessness priority policy as well. It's highlighted in our report whereby one in 10 units are offered through coordinated access to individuals experiencing homelessness.
Thank you.
I have Counselor Hand and then Counselor Dennis.
Thank you for your report. It was very informative. Can you just give me today's date for by-name list? The numbers in there were 2024, and you mentioned an increase of 60, so I'm just curious. Thank you.
Mr. Haney, please.
Thank you for the question. Through you, Warden. The by-name list number changes day by day. It does fluctuate by as many plus or minus 10 individuals even within a single day. Generally speaking, the by-name list is just over 300 right now. So we've seen that pretty steady 2024. We were able to house households at a really high rate despite the inflow, and we've had a modest decrease across 2025, down to about 300, depending on when you run the report.
Counselor Dennis.
Thank you, Warden Marriott, to Mr. Haney. Sir, when you were outlining the various causes of the problem that we're in, sir, you'd be remiss not to mention that Lampton County has one of the highest unemployment rates in southern Ontario, and there's no ends up for buts, that that is a contributing factor to homelessness and frustration and despair. People give up, they resort to drugs, alcohol, and they just give up flat. You know, employment gives people hope, it gives them purpose, and without that, they feel hopeless and they resort to all other things. But what really strikes me about the plan here is it seems like our job or our intention is to take care of these people from cradle to grave or for the rest of their lives. Do we, is it our job just to stack these people up? And I think it's a noble goal to end homelessness, but I think that's, it's like trying to end poverty. I think it's a noble cause, but I think it's virtually impossible. I think that it's a fool's errand. I don't think that we're ever going to end poverty. I don't think we're ever going to end poverty because the standard for poor continues to rise. And like I say, the thing is, is these people are hurting right now, and you know, we're Canadians, we're kind people. Throw them a lifeline, get them back, you know, so they're able to re-enter society as productive people. But no one is, I don't think there's anyone that would, wants to take care of these people for the rest of their lives. They should, we should give them the skills to get back on their feet, get them treatment, and then move them on. Like I say, we're all taxpayers here, and no one deserves a free ride like this.
Okay, Mr. Haney, would you like to respond, please?
Thank you. Through you, Warden. Certainly, one of the reasons that I described there for reason to be hope across this year is we can look retroactively to the households that we have progressed from homelessness into housing. I said that every single year since the outset of the pandemic, we have progressed more than 200 unique individuals into homelessness or into housing from homelessness. That means more than 1,000 individuals in just the last handful of years, we have progressed into housing from homelessness, and we don't serve those individuals. And we don't serve those individuals, a large portion of them anymore, because they've achieved stability. And what we know is that true fixed-site supportive housing will be required to progress many of the individuals to that point of stability moving forward. But absolutely, our-
Well, you know, you can hope in one hand and stick your hand in mud in the other and see which one fills up first. Like I say, I know your intentions are good, but like I say, I think we need to be realistic. And I think that we need to get these people, you know, like I said, I'm all for trying to rehabilitate people and, you know, trying to get them back on their feet, but they should not have, they should not be wardens of the state for the rest of their lives. Well, all of us are out working hard and paying our taxes and living by the rules and doing the right thing.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Dennis. Counselor White.
Thank you, Warden. Thank you, Mr. Haney. And again, thank you for highlighting and reminding us the extensive work that your team has been doing in preventing, you know, further strain on our community. I think it's laudable and to be commended. When you specifically talk about supportive housing, and I raise that because it's, I don't know, it's kind of the elephant in the room. Right now, we're looking at some comparisons between shelters, emergency shelters in the community, and what supportive housing offers. And I have a few questions, but if you could just perhaps zero in on that difference and maybe highlight what you hope to achieve through, or what we hope to achieve, what evidence shows through supportive housing versus what we're seeing as a result of emergency shelters?
Mr. Haney, please.
Thank you for the question. Through you, Warden. Absolutely, there's a clear distinction to be made between emergency housing, shelter services, and supportive housing. Shelter services are necessary mandated service that anybody can access when they're at that point of housing instability. The barriers to accessing shelter are few and far between. Anybody can access that at any time. It is incredibly expensive downstream intervention that we wish to move away from by either offering preventative or long-term solutions like supportive housing. And it's distinct in many ways, but at its core, it's housing. It's permanent housing. It's the end goal for individuals to achieve stability. It includes intensive wraparound supports, and it decreases, there's a wealth of evidence to suggest that it decreases a community's need for shelters, including the commensurate exorbitant costs associated with shelter.
Follow-up, Counselor White.
Okay, thank you. And in terms of identifying needs for individuals, I know that that's part of the intensive model that we're talking about here. And I think there's, again, just in the research I've done, the access to, you know, some of these sites that I've been offered, that I think there's this notion that whether people are living unsheltered in tent cities around the country or accessing the shelter system or couch surfing, that it tends to center around one particular type of individual, and that would be those suffering from substance use disorders and deep mental health and untreated mental health disorders. But in my experience and what I've witnessed, that the net is much larger than that. It's catching folks who are seniors that simply don't have enough income to support a traditional rental unit, physical disabilities or physical untreated medical conditions, as well as mental health disorders, and perhaps undiagnosed developmental disabilities as well. And oftentimes, these folks, again, when we're talking about seniors, folks with disabilities, undiagnosed developmental disabilities, they're folks that are simply lost in whatever our system is offering right now. And perhaps supportive units might mean long-term assistance, you know, to Counselor Dennis's point. Are we asking folks in their 70s to go and work full-time jobs and afford $2,000 a month rent? Or is it now our job as a society to care for those folks or those with developmental disabilities who, again, or mental health disorders after the age of 18? When you fall off the magic cliff and the support system completely changes, are we not looking at identifying those unique needs and then pairing people up with the right resources through these supportive housing units and the Heart Hub? Is that what I understand our goal is?
Mr. Haney, please.
Thank you for the question. Through you, Warden. The short answer is yes. Supportive housing can meet a broad range of intensity of programming and form of programming. Effectively, it's permanent fixed housing with onsite supports from multidisciplinary health and human service agencies. And so that can change from building to building, program to program, and it gets served a broad range of individuals who have the need for wraparound supports in order to achieve life stabilization, to sustain their tenancy. And some individuals do, yes, of course, progress beyond supportive housing into the regular private market.
Okay. In the interest of time, I'll end discussion there. Thank you again, Mr. Haney, for your presentation. Item next on the agenda, item number 10, minutes of open session council of June 4th. I'd look for a motion to adopt these minutes. Counselor Broad moves, and Counselor Sageman seconds. All in favor? That'd be carried. Item number 11, Board of Health. Under A, we have correspondence to receive and file. One correspondence, unless there's discussion, but a move for a motion for that. Counselor Ferguson and Counselor McRoberts, seconds. All in favor? That's carried. And item B, Board of Health Information Reports. We have four reports there to receive and file unless there's questions. Counselor White and Counselor Miller, seconds. All in favor? That'd be carried. Thank you. And item C, Board of Health Reports Requiring a Motion Report Regarding Lampton Public Health's 2025 to 2029 Strategic Plan that we heard earlier. Look for a motion. Counselor Case and Counselor Atkinson, seconds. All in favor? That's carried. Is there any other business for the Board of Health today? Seeing none, thank you, Dr. Duick. Item number 12, Correspondence. There's one correspondence to receive and file. Look for a motion for that. Counselor Atkinson, second by Deputy Warden Agar. All in favor? That's carried. And item number 13, Information Reports. Social Services Division Regarding Housing and Homelessness Plan Progress Report. Look for a motion for that. Counselor Miller and Counselor Hand, seconds. All in favor? That'd be carried. And items not requiring a motion, the Sarnia-Lampton Economic Partnership Board Minutes of June 27th. Look for a motion for these, please. Counselor Cook and Counselor White, seconds. All in favor? That's carried. Brings us to item number 15, Committee Minutes. First motion was under Infrastructure and Development Services Information Report. And motion number two was that Dr., sorry, Mr. Dwayne Reed be appointed as Building Inspector. Motion number three was draft encroachment agreements between Environment, Climate Change Canada and the Corporation of County of Lampton. Motion four was under a report regarding water quality monitoring station. And under Public Health Services, motion five was the information reports for Public Health Services. And motion six was acknowledging Anita Trussler, thanked for her years of service, and congratulated on her retirement. Item number seven, under Cultural Services, that staff be authorized to execute the renovations of county council chambers. And item number eight was from a report regarding museums, gallery, and archives collection management. And motion number nine was from a report regarding proposal of consolidation of Sombra and Port Lampton libraries. And item number 10, under Long-Term Care, Information Report Regarding Inter-Are Transition. And under Corporate Services Division, motion number nine was Correspondence. Item number 12, under Finance, Facilities, and Acquisitions, Report Regarding First Quarter Financial Update. And motion 13, under Social Services Division, that county council endorse a resolution for correspondence. 14 was under Information Reports, and Social Services be received and filed. And 15 was regarding Integrated Employment Services Team Staffing. In camera was motion 16, 17, 18, and 19, and adjournment number 20. Motion to receive, to adopt these minutes, please. Counselor McRoberts and Counselor Broad, seconds. All in favor? That's carried. Item number 16, there are no items tabled from previous meetings. Sorry, I skipped the 15B, the Audit Committee Minutes of June 18th. Look for a motion to approve these, please. Counselor Miller and Counselor Lucely, seconds. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Item 16, there are no items tabled. Number 17, Notice of Motions. We have two notice of motions. Counselor Dennis, you have the first one. I'll read some rules regarding the rules of procedure for reconsideration. Pursuant to Rule 20.1 of our Rules of Procedure, only a member who voted on the prevailing side of an issue may bring forward a motion to reconsider. The motion in question that you wish reconsidered was adopted on May 7 in camera, a meeting you attended, and it saw the county donate the George Street lands to Inwell. So please confirm that indeed you voted on the prevailing side of that issue. In other words, you voted in favor of the donation of the George Street lands? Sorry, you're muted there, Counselor Dennis.
Yes, I was given the impression that the neighbors were going to have a say in the matter. But yes, I did. I was misled.
So you did vote in favor at that date?
I did vote in favor, but I was misled. I was under the impression that the neighbors were going to have a say in the matter.
Okay, so also under Rule 20.3 does allow, does not allow debate, however, it does allow the mover to make a brief statement outlining the reasons for proposing the reconsideration.
Well, quite simply, the neighbors, Inwell did have a presentation after the fact. They distributed flyers the day before the meeting, apparently. I was away, and then the Inwell presentation didn't go well. The neighbors were furious. They're furious afterwards. I've never seen anything like it, quite honestly, in my years as a councillor. There is rage, and that neighborhood, you know, they've done their part. The River City facility is in their neighborhood. They've, the horror stories I've been told, talked about, these people are upset, and this will affect their property values. There's no ends or buts. They have been hit in the gut more times than any other neighborhood in the city when it comes to this sort of thing. And quite honestly, I know Mayor Bradley has always been a champion of-
Okay, we have to, it has to be brief why we're-
Okay, you know what? The fact of the matter is, in Sarnia, we've always, always asked for feedback from neighbors when we do things, whether it's anything. We've always asked for input before we make big decisions. And this just isn't right, that they didn't, that we didn't consult neighbors with such a serious, serious matter. It just reeks of-
Okay, before we can proceed, we have to have a seconder to the motion.
Yes.
And there's no discussion. It has to be a brief reason. I've allowed more than that. So is there a seconder to the motion? Counselor McRoberts, you second it? So go ahead with your comment. Actually, no, there's no debate at all, sorry. Can't have discussion.
Recorded vote, please.
Okay, we have a notice of motion from Counselor Dennis, seconded by Counselor McRoberts. A recorded vote was requested by Counselor Dennis. We will start with Counselor Cook.
No.
I have a no. Counselor Dennis?
Yes.
I have a yes. Counselor Ferguson?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Hand?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Lucely?
No.
I have a no. Counselor McRoberts?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Miller?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Sageman?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Veen?
No.
I have a no. Counselor White?
No.
I have a no. Deputy Warden Agar?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Atkinson?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Bucci?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Bradley?
No.
Have a no. Counselor Broad?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Case?
No.
I have a no. Warden Marriott?
No.
I have a no. That is defeated.
Okay, 17B, Counselor McRoberts also gave notice of motion. I'll let you proceed, Counselor McRoberts.
Thank you. I would believe that, actually, I don't believe, I'm going to make a statement if I can, that part of our job as municipal councillors is to make, are to be accountable to the public, and are expected to operate with transparency toward decision-making. So we are not being transparent from moment one, and I understand there's a lot of wheels turning and making projects happen in that certain issues have to be spoken to in camera. But once we know what we're doing, the people, it's their money, they just want to know what's going on. They want to speak to it. Is that going to change everything that we decide on? No. But they want to know in the neighborhoods, should be aware sooner so that they know what's coming. If they want to pack up and move, then they can do that. If they want to speak to it, they have a right to know what we're deciding on the moment that we are moving forward. So if you could please help us with this issue and the meters around the certain neighborhoods so that we know. We need to be public, and we need to be transparent. Thank you.
Do we have a seconder for the notice of motion?
I would like a recorded vote also, please.
Counselor White, seconds. Discussion? Counselor Bradley, please.
Yep. Just a question to the councillor. In some cases, there will be a full public rezoning process, which allows everyone to speak, planning reports, and everything else. So with this- So would this only occur when there isn't a need for a public hearing?
Counselor McRoberts, second. Should allow the question to you, but go ahead.
I believe what we have right now are, when we are working on plans, information's leaking out and communities are losing their mind because they don't know what's going on. So if we are just transparent from the beginning and then asking for community input as soon as we can, just a little bit of information goes a long way. So exactly as it's written, that's how it should go.
So I'm trying to understand, there's going to be two processes on every planning application in the future?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Dennis?
Thank you, Warden Marriott. You know what, that, with what Counselor McRoberts just said, that just sounds, what she just said, just totally, was totally, it was just totally the opposite of what she just did with my motion. Like, like, that doesn't make any sense at all. Like, I, she's speaking out of both sides of her mouth. Anyhow, the fact of the matter is, that's not good enough. Her motion, yeah, I agree. If something like that is coming down the line, yeah, absolutely, the neighbors should know, but it, but we should not vote on this, we should not decide on this until the neighbors have had their say. They should come in as a, as a delegation, give us their opinions, and then we should vote on it. These people have hundreds of thousands of dollars invested in their homes, beautiful homes, beautiful, beautiful homes that they've invested in. And Counselor McRoberts says, well, maybe they may want to sell when they know this is coming. That is the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard before in my life.
Okay.
That is absolutely...
Counselor Dennis? No personal attacks, please.
That's, that's, that's not personal, this is what she said. I'm just saying this about anything. The way that this, the Victoria Street thing was handled is absolutely nuts. It was crazy to allow...
Right, we're dealing with the motion on the floor, Counselor Dennis.
And this is, and that motion results from the Victoria Street decision. This is absolutely ridiculous for the, to act so secretly.
Counselor Dennis?
There's not one of you guys, there's not one of you guys that would have bought a home in knowing, knowing full well, having insider information, near a supportive housing unit. You know that. It's, it is absurd. And, and that's fine, that's fine what happened just now. It's probably going to go to Sarnia for a variance or rezoning. And, and then hopefully, we have four other city councilors that will have the common sense to shut it down. But the fact of the matter is, is this is wrong.
Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, I, I think it's ridiculous that you have councilors that, that are not going to be paid the price at the polls for making wrong decisions in Sarnia. So anyways, guys...
Counselor Case, you have the floor, Counselor Case.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I guess the question I've got is, it looks like we're, how does this all going to work? All of a sudden, we're going to check in on certain things? So we often, we just can't check in on certain things? If we're going to change our process here, that means anything and everything that comes to this body of council will have to go out for consultation to the public. Am I reading that right? Because once you, once you set this precedent, it's going to be everything that we're going to be looking at. So there's things that come back that council has to approve traditionally through, through the act, through our rules of procedure, and there are things that aren't. So this one here didn't show up that way. So are we talking about everything from now on in, coming back to us for approval? Just want some clarity on that. Because you can't have it one way and not have it work the same way consistently with everything else we deal with here. So I'm a little confused, I don't know if I'm being clear enough on what I'm asking.
If the, I'll ask our legal department if the motion does pass, if that's the case. Mr. Beauchamp, were you able to comment, please?
Ultimately, the motion only speaks to decisions that are made by council with relation to supportive housing builds. However, the implications of that down the road, what this body decides to do based on this process is up to this body.
Follow-up, Counselor Case.
So follow-up, Mr. Warden, if I can. I just want a clarification on this. I made a motion probably a few months back that allowed the city of Sarnia to look at locations and where the, where certain things were going to be built. Now, this, this particular model was not included in that, this Inwell model, from my understanding. But as Counselor Dennis said, the city has their own process that they go through, their own, you know, when it comes to zoning and all that, which still has to happen. But I guess from what I'm thinking, what I'm seeing from this motion by, by Counselor McRoberts, I'm just, I'm confused. I think we may be setting a precedent here for other items to come before us. I'm all for good consultation, but I think we now are starting to cross a line and maybe setting a precedent for other items in the future that normally don't go through these extra processes of, of granted permission by this body of council. So just my point, I'm still rather confused on what this actually does and what sets us up for in the future. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Counselor Case, Counselor Sagman, please.
Something that concerns me is, is throughout this entire process, we have a provincially mandated process for land use plan. So if we need to do rezoning or adaptive land use plan, we have to do a full public process where everybody gets to have their say. In the instance where that isn't going to happen, where we don't have to do a rezoning of a project, that means that that property is already appropriately zoned for that use. Part of this that sits with me is that, as a landowner, you should know what's owned around you. You should have an idea of what's allowed as land uses. I know what's allowed around my home, and I, and I think that, that that's part of the transparency process. We have systems set up, and that is part of transparency. And when we do things here in council, we can be transparent after a point. There's, there's legal, there's real estate. Once that's out of the way, then we do it all in open council, it's very transparent. So to me, it's, it's a combination of, we have a public process that's informative, and also as a landowner, it's, it's part of your responsibility to know what's allowed in and around your neighborhood as far as zoning goes. It's, it's a very public document, everybody can download it in seconds from the internet. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dennis.
Yeah, thank you, Warden Marriott. Again, we, the gentleman just spoke about transparency. There is no transparency done whatsoever. And you know what's, you know what's scary, and it should scare my, my colleagues from Sarnia, is, is people have already talked about moving out of the area, and, and what's going to happen for the rest of the city? What kind of confidence are they going to have, knowing that, that they're, that the county in particular is, is just going to pick an area in the city of Sarnia and set one of these, these flop houses up? And, and, and they're going to just say, the heck with this. I'm, Sarnia, the politicians, other than Dennis, doesn't have my back. They're going to move to Plimpton, Wyoming, or St. Clair Township, or Petrolia? And maybe that's what some of these, the councilors in the county like, actually. Maybe they're thinking, yeah, you know what? The, the, Sergeant Dennis is the only one that has a pair of Kahunas and is going to stand up for the people of Sarnia. So you know what? We're just going to, we're just going to go to the county where, where the county politicians seem to be playing the Sarnia councilors like, like, like suckers. This is, this is exactly what's wrong. We, we, when, when you're, this, the way this was handled was handled totally wrong. And you know what, guys? This is why I get the, I see complaints. This is why I get kicked out of council, because I stick up for the people of Sarnia and I don't take the crap with these guys. And guess, guess what, guys? The election is going to be in one year and three months.
Counselor Dennis, that's, thank you.
You, you, and guys, I get elected mayor of Sarnia, the party and the county's over with you. You got my word on that.
Yes, sir. Counselor Case?
So, this is what's wrong with government today, in my opinion, Mr. Warden. We all come together here to make decisions collectively. I take exception with what was just said by Counselor Dennis. That's not the way this place works. I also want to say that we've said, I mentioned the motion I brought forward back a while ago. I'm at the point as a county councilor now, where I'd like to say to the city of Sarnia, why don't you decide where you would like us to build these particular units when it comes to housing? Why don't you decide as a government, come back and let us know where you want to build them? Because to be honest with you, we've looked at different areas, different models, seems to be there's a problem with every one of them. With all due respect to the people that live there, I think it's good that they have their say too. Don't get me wrong. But I for one, I've sat here for over 20 years, I've never seen county council just so dysfunctional in so many ways when it comes to trying to find places to build these particular homes. So what I'd like to say to the city of Sarnia, city of Sarnia, you go back, you decide collectively where we should build these units. Bring those suggestions back to county council, and I for one, will do my best to honor that. But they keep playing this game, where we keep going around and around. It's not healthy for anybody. It's not healthy for the residents, it's not healthy for the folks that actually need the assistance. This whole thing has to stop, and we have to start being proactive and finding places to be able to put, put these people and allow them to continue with their lives. So my thing is, I guess I'm saying, Mr. Warden, is to the city of Sarnia, you decide where you want us to build them, bring back your recommendations, and we'll deal with it then. Thank you.
Okay, one last comment before I call a question. I think we've had a good discussion, Counselor White.
Thank you. Just want to add as well that we all have individual responsibilities to understand information. That's what we're elected to do, that's what we are paid for. It's fine if all you want to do with your term is to show up for meetings and, and reflect the voice of, of folks in a particular demographic, and that, and that is absolutely right. Right? It's, it's not, I don't have anything wrong with that, I don't see anything wrong with that, I'm not judging that. But there are certain instances, like where we're facing a crisis right now at a national level, at an international level, it's not just Canada, it's not just North America. We've got a very serious issue with housing affordability, with lack of supports, the trajectory does not look good unless we actively search for solutions. Allowing things to exacerbate is only going to make things worse for everybody, including folks that are living in individual neighborhoods, who are experiencing a lot. So it's not to invalidate the experience of the folks who are speaking up, to also suggest that, I've done some research, I've, I've understood the evidence, I've toured, from a personal perspective, I've been to home, ending homelessness conference, I've toured Indwell facilities, I've got a meeting tomorrow with the mayor of St. Thomas to discuss what the outcomes have been in St. Thomas since implementing Indwell. I'm going on Friday to Hamilton to speak to a ward counselor where Indwell sites are, and to tour their facilities, and to speak to neighbors there, to find out down the road what this looks like. We all have the opportunity to do that and to come to this table informed. And then to take that information, not because I'm prejudging an outcome, but because I'm truly trying to find a solution to something that I've heard for years. For years, I've heard folks in, in a particular neighborhood concerned about the, the happenings, we'll say, outside of a particular facility. And I respect that, understand, and I hear their concerns, especially when we're talking about an unregulated facility. So to find a solution for that has been a goal. And I think that finding solutions that are based on evidence and that are highly supportive in other communities, and in fact, what we're talking about here is a solution that is not only supported in other communities, the province is actively working with Indwell to create a provincial strategy. So why would we wait to be mandated when the problem gets three times worse, 10 times worse? It's not going to get any better, but by the time we're mandated to do exactly what we're being offered to do, offered right now, and not just offered, we've worked towards this for years. Credit to staff, credit to community members who have held events over the last number of years to inform folks what supportive housing is and who Indwell is. Why would we wait when we know that the outcomes are positive, when we know that the facilities are well-run? And I get it, that, I get it, there's misinformation, there's a member of council that is telling folks actively that Indwell hands out drugs.
We'll call a question, Counselor.
And that is unfortunate because it's wrong and it's untrue. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor McRoberts requests a recorded vote. I'll ask for the randomizer again, please.
We have a notice of motion from Counselor McRoberts, seconded by Counselor White. Recorded vote was requested by Counselor McRoberts, and we'll start the vote with Counselor Bucci. I have a no. Counselor Bradley?
Record, yes.
I have a yes. Counselor Broad?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Case?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Cook?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Dennis? You're muted, Counselor Dennis.
Yeah, yeah, I guess so, well.
I have a yes. Counselor Ferguson?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Hand?
No.
No. Counselor Loosely?
No.
I have a no. Counselor McRoberts?
Yes.
I have a yes. Counselor Miller?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Sagman?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Veen?
No.
I have a no. Counselor White?
Yes.
I have a yes. Deputy Warden Agar?
No.
I have a no. Counselor Atkinson?
No.
I have a no. Warden Marriott?
No.
I have a no. That motion is defeated.
Okay, looking for item number 18, other business. Is there any other business to come forward? First, we have Counselor Veen and then Counselor McRoberts, please.
Thank you, Warden. On a letter note, on July 19th, Oil Springs is going to celebrate their 160th anniversary. We invite everyone out to enjoy the day. The parade starts at 11:00. We have many bands through the day, we have one more polls, we've got stuff for the kids to do. Come on out and enjoy the day, we'd love to have you, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McRoberts.
I'm not sure if I'm giving a motion, I would like to make a motion.
Yes, we, well, we allow other motions. You'll have to see what it is for Counselor McRoberts.
I would like to make a motion that council direct staff to contact Indwell and ask them if the property that is potentially being built on George would be filled with the mental health folks and no addiction residents. I did speak with Andrew Maida at the conversation that we had at the Kiwanis Center, and he said that they were actually thinking about doing that type of model. So if we've already learned from River City Vineyard that the addiction issues made that facility worse, why don't we just go with the mental health?
Okay, so to follow the rules, council can deal with that motion now, but we need a two-thirds to allow the motion. So we need a second or first, or... So that's up to you, Counselor McRoberts. Do you want a notice of motion for September, or do you want to deal with it now?
I would like to deal with that now.
Okay, so first we need, question by Counselor Hand, please.
Like, I would prefer that that wait, because we haven't had any time to prepare the thoughts or investigate what this means. It just feels like I kind of feel blindsided.
So Counselor McRoberts has requested a deal with now, so there has to be a motion that is two-thirds of council, separate motion that we deal with it now. So the motion, somebody needs to make a motion to deal with it now. That would be the first motion. Counselor McRoberts?
If I can take that back and wait until September.
Oh, you can make a notice of motion.
I'll change that to a notice of motion, thank you.
Thank you. And we will acknowledge that. Is there any other new business? Counselor Atkinson?
Thank you, Warden Marriott. It's my pleasure as the vice chair of the Lampton Agricultural Hall of Fame to recognize three groups that are going to be inducted into the Hall of Fame on July, Saturday, July the 12th, of the Plimpton Wyoming Agriculture Society. First of all, I'd like to recognize Mr. Bill Duffield from Plimpton, Wyoming, Henry and Jacoba Peters from Thedford, as well as Lampton Mutual Insurance Company in Watford will be inducted in that ceremony, and as well as a former inductee. We congratulate you and we welcome to see you that day as well, Warden Marriott. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Atkinson. Is there any other new business? Any other business, sorry? Seeing none, we move to item number 19, notice of bylaws. Mr. Beauchamp, please.
Thank you, Warden. It is moved by Counselor Veen and seconded by Counselor Sagman that bylaws number 17 to 19 of 2025 as circulated be taken as being read a first and second time.
All in favor? Let's carry it.
It is moved by Counselor Sagman and seconded by Counselor Veen that bylaws number 17 to 19 of 2025 as circulated be taken as being read a third and final time.
All in favor? Let's carry it. Before I, uh, call for adjournment, this is Ms. Colasanti's official last county council meeting. Valerie joined our team in 2018 as a general manager of the Social Services Division and has since led our Ontario Works Housing, Homelessness Prevention and Social Planning, Children's Services and Local Immigration Partnership Programs. During this time, Valerie has been a key member of the county's senior management team and has demonstrated unwavering commitment and dedication to our community's health and wellbeing. While Valerie's retirement concludes a successful tenure with the county, it goes without saying that we will certainly miss her expertise, dedication, ingenuity and resourcefulness. Please join me in congratulating Valerie on a well-earned retirement. But Valerie, would you please come forward? Um, Valerie will now spend her time with family and friends, hopefully in relaxation. We wish you the best, Valerie, and congratulations on a well-earned retirement, if you could come forward. Look for a motion to adjourn with the next meetings. Get, oh, sorry, sorry. Counselor Lucely?
Thank you, Warden Marriott. Again, for the record, I would like to make a motion so it isn't within the minutes to thank Mrs. Colasanti for her service to the County of Lampton over the last number of years. Thank you.
Okay.
I would make that motion.
Do we have a seconder? Counselor Hand. All in favor? Let's carry it. Thank you. Counselor Veen? Next, uh, meeting is scheduled for September the 3rd, within camera, to commence at 9:00 AM. Moved by Counselor Veen, seconded by Counselor Atkinson. All in favor? Let's carry it. Please I'd also remind county councillors that the barbecue, annual barbecue will be held at the Township of St. Clair after council on September the 3rd.